I'm going to call the Board of Selectmen meeting to order for Tuesday, March 11th, 2025, and we will start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under your God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we have a few announcements. This meeting is being recorded by the local scene. Anyone intending to make an audio or video recording of this meeting should notify the Chair at this time. I'm seeing nobody. Financial assistance applications are available on the town's website or by calling the Selectmen's Office. For anyone interested in volunteering, there are several vacancies on various committees and boards. To see a complete list of the openings, please visit our website at KingstonMA.gov. And also check out the website for any additional events or notices. Again, it's www.kingstonma.gov. Any other announcements from board members? No. All right. At this point, we'll entertain open forum. If there's anybody here who wishes to speak at open forum, just raise your hand. Nope, nobody online? Nope, okay. Our first appointment is recognition of police officers. Chief, are you here?
Chief, the chief is on his way.
Okay. You know what? We can come right back to it. How long do you think?
Do you want to move the minutes? That's an easy question.
Yeah, let's do that.
I didn't have any edits. I don't know if anyone else did.
All right.
Great. I move Board of Selectmen accept the open session meeting minutes of January 28th, 2025, February 18th, 2025, and February 25th, 2025, as presented.
Second. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
I used to roll call voting. I was sort of pausing.
Yeah, I know. It doesn't feel right. Do we want to jump to, we do have a resignation of the, from the Agricultural Commission. Is there somebody here who wanted to speak? Yes, please. And just go right up to the microphone. Just introduce yourself.
Good evening. My name is Rui Santos. I'm on the Kingston Agricultural Commission, and we're here to acknowledge the retirement of Barry Mathias, who was one of the founding members and probably the impetus for us establishing a agricultural commission. And Barry and Lydia have been very prominent in the town. They own Bog Hollow Farm, which you've all seen as you go down 106, Whopping Road, and they have been very supportive of many adventures and many things that have happened in the town. Barry is retiring, but we are very fortunate that his son, John, is going to take his place on the committee when going through all the proper channels that that will take place. The one thing most people do not know about the town of Kingston is that agriculture has never been a really big part of this town. From the very beginning, it was always boat building, ice harvesting, and other things that took priorities over agriculture. In my lifetime, I have seen the disappearance of six different farms where today there are almost 90 houses. And I'm not willing to say that the trade-off was in a positive fashion. I firmly believe that farms give a town character. If you come down 106 or go on Whopping Road and you go through that S-curve, you see cranberry bogs on either side, one owned by the Mathiases and one that was owned by Roger Carrier until he resold it. In my 35 years of working in the Bridgewater's, I can't tell you how many people asked me when I told them I came from Kingston, "Oh, do you live near those cranberry bogs that look so nice when you come down that road?" And I said, "No, unfortunately, I don't." But we've been fortunate in that the Roger Carrier bogs have been purchased by someone or a group of people who want to continue to maintain them as cranberry bogs. As I said, I've seen the disappearance of six different farms in my lifetime, and to me, that's not necessarily a positive factor. I have, however, seen in the last four years, the creation of a new farm that is going like gangbusters, and that is John Ware's Christmas Tree Shop Farm on Route 27. That has taken off in the last three years to a point where there's never any parking on the weekends that he's open. So I applaud him. And I can tell you in all honesty, John's acreage there is in excess of 17 or 18 acres, so you could put 40 houses in there, the way we claim houses are 36A or 40-something B or whatever else. So I think he needs to be recognized for that. Behind me are two of the members of the commission. They're here to make sure I don't do anything dumb or say anything dumb. There's John Webble and there's Christine Navah-Moltry, and they have been on the committee for years and years and years. We meet once a month. We talk about agricultural things, and we try to recognize anything that goes on in the town that's agricultural. But I think the town owes at least a round of applause to Barry and Lydia for the years that they spent running that, those bogs. And what most people don't understand about agriculture, 55% of the farmers in the state of Massachusetts do something else as a primary occupation. Farming is not an occupation, it's a way of life. If you get involved in it, you stay with it while you're doing something else. Barry worked for UPS for years as an 18-wheeler driver. His wife was a schoolteacher. John owns a construction company. Carrie, his wife, is a schoolteacher. So we're all doing something else, and yet we stay with the farms because we know they are a viable and very major part of our society that should be recognized. So we thank you, and thank you. I hope you'll send Barry a letter and thank him.
And I'd also like to point out and thank them for all the years. I mean, my kids grew up here in Kingston, went through K through 12, and all four of my kids got to visit the farm. They had a lot of school trips out there to the farm, you know, throughout the year, pumpkins, Christmas trees, all sorts of things. But it was so great for my kids to see that in the town that they lived in, you know, to see that as, you know, something that farming is essential. I mean, we have to have farming. You can't, I mean, that's where our food comes from, you know, in the end. And I mean, I know, you know, they do cranberry bogs, which is super interesting, and it's exciting for them to see that and to see the harvesting every year. It's just, it's really awesome, and we appreciate all the time that he put into this commission as well, so.
You know, I noticed, I was doing research on a, I was a public school teacher for 36 years, and so I like to get into research. I was doing research on the town reports, and in the Kingston Town Report, they often have, starting in the mid-1950s, a photograph on the cover. Del Nose Wharf should be a memorial because it's been there probably 15 times. There's never been a photograph of any agricultural operation on the cover. And today with drones or whatever else they have, I think that view of the 106 and Whopping Road would be, look nice on the cover. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Can we give him a round of applause?
Yes, absolutely. All right. I see our chief is here.
Should I move the resignation?
Yes, please do.
So I move the Board of Selectmen accept the resignation from Jay Barry Mathias from the Agricultural Commission effective immediately.
Second. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, and we'll do, should we do the appointment now?
Probably.
Yeah, why don't we go ahead and do that? All right, so we have, as you mentioned, we have a letter from John Mathias requesting appointment to the Agricultural Commission, and they met on February 26th and discussed the application. They're recommending the appointment of Mr. Mathias.
I move the Board of Selectmen appoint John Mathias to the Agricultural Commission effective immediately through June 30th, 2026.
Second. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, that's unanimous. Thank you. All right, Chief, you have some recognition to do.
It's okay. We have, I think, 15 kids between the five of us.
Yeah.
So we're used to the, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's true. He'll be interested in serving the community.
Good evening, Honorable Members, Mr. Chairman, Ms. Tucker. Sorry I'm late. I can talk longer if you want. I mean, you know that I like talking. It's totally up to you to make up the difference. Could I have Officer Dowd and Officer Gallo up front, please? You guys look good. I'm glad you're behind me. There's a lot of things we do on this job. Sometimes it's apprehension. Sometimes it's search and rescue things that we end up engaging in. So I received a recommendation from Sergeant Tom Maury for the actions of these two gentlemen to my right. Chief, I was writing to inform you of the exceptional performance by Officer Eric Dowd and Officer Mike Gallo in the face of danger during a life-threatening situation on the night of December 18th, 2024 at about 7:30 PM. Officer Dowd and Officer Gallo responded to a single car motor vehicle crash at the intersection at Elm and Millgate Road. The operator was inside the vehicle as it caught fire in the engine compartment and it spread. There was a citizen that stopped at the scene. Officer Dowd and Officer Gallo attempted to render medical aid until, to the operator until the flames began to extend towards the hood and the passenger compartment. Officer Dowd and Officer Gallo and the Good Samaritan were able to safely extricate the operator from the vehicle as the flames continued to spread, helping prevent further injury to the operator. I'd like to recognize Officer Dowd and Officer Gallo for their quick response to the call. This decisive action resulted in life-saving action and displayed courage in a dangerous situation. So I'm going to read the citation. This is a letter of merit from the department to Officers Dowd and Gallo for your actions on December 18th, 2024 in response to a motor vehicle crash involving a burning vehicle and a trapped occupant. But for your actions, the occupant may have suffered more serious injuries. Your actions maintain great credit, reflect great credit on yourself, the department, and maintain the highest traditions of law enforcement. Congratulations on a job well done. If you don't know, this is Officer Tim, as he's known by the kids at the Sacred Heart School.
That's actually what I was going to say, is I always thought he was Officer Tim.
Officer Tim? I call him TJ. Some people call him Timothy. He might have done something wrong if he gets called that. I don't know. So this one is a little different. This is one of those kind of going above and beyond the scope of regular duties. As everybody knows, Officer Tim is the school liaison officer to the Sacred Heart School, and he's a part-time SRO for us. I received an email from a retired member of the law enforcement community who, I go way back with both mom and the dad for the student that was involved in something that happened at the school. A couple of years ago. a couple of weeks ago. So I'm actually going to invite retired Detective Side and Tim Stan to the podium to give it some context about what happened. He retired from the Brockton Police Department.
Thanks, Chief, appreciate it. Good morning, well, good afternoon. Well, my wife and I aren't Kingston residents, our daughters do attend the school here at Sacred Heart. And again, I have to laugh because my oldest daughter didn't realize that Officer Tim had a last name. And again, in the grand scheme of things, what took place was very minor, but it was very important to us. My youngest daughter, our youngest daughter, had a thermos explosion on her desk, which naturally led everyone in the class to laugh, a typical kid thing to do. While opening it, she spilled it, and it went everywhere. Caused her to cry, and Officer Tim was very helpful about calming her down. It wasn't so much that that led my wife and I to write to the chief on Officer Arnold's behalf. It was what he did afterwards. He sought out our older daughter and said, "Hey, could you watch out for your sister today? She kind of had a tough day. If you could check in on her," or words to that effect. And, you know, it's easy for the kids to ignore at home, I'm sure. Looking around the room, everybody's been there. Well, our kids are young, they came late in life for us. It's one thing when we ask them to stick together. Hey, make sure your sister's okay. Your sister looks like she could help with this or that. We're also the people that make sure that there's toothpaste on the toothbrush and that they're cleaning up after themselves. It's a different thing when somebody goes out of their way and fortifies that. And we just really appreciate it. Again, the obvious joke would be crying over spilt milk, but it did mean an awful lot to us. Another thing is that we've never formally met, but my thanks go not only to the agency and the chief, but to the local government as well. Without you guys supporting the men and women of the police department, they'd never be able to get done what they need to do. I think you deserve the credit as well. And I did have one other interaction that I think kind of may sum up Officer Arnold's work in general. The kid, there was a function at the school for Halloween, and amidst the sugar-crazed fury that was going on, the safest place to be and to be out of the way was tucked in where Officer Arnold had set up his cruiser to give out candy for the night and school supplies and. And what was really, it was clear that he wasn't doing it for anybody else's benefit, but for the child. A group came up of five or six kids, and he, one of them lagged behind. And Officer Arnold, again, I don't know if he even remembers it, kind of let that happen. And when it came to that last kid's turn, there was a reason behind it. He wanted to check with him and ask him how a certain subject had been going. And when the kid answered that it was going okay, he said, "Well, keep it up. If you keep with it, I know you'll get it." I wish I could remember what topic it was, but I just thought it important to mention that this isn't the only thing. And again, if I hadn't already mentioned, he's like a superstar at the school. We do pickup, or we see him there. The kids really appreciate him being there, and so do we. And I'm sorry to be so overly wordy about it. It's a minor incident, especially compared to the heroic action of the officers, but I think what Officer Arnold's doing every day deserves almost as much credit, if not more. Thank you, on behalf of my wife.
Thanks for making up for that lost time for me, I appreciate it. So I'm going to read the citation. Officer TJ Arnold, for your actions as a school liaison officer in your role at the Sacred Heart School for taking time to go on above the, beyond to ensure that the students appropriately advocated for following an incident with other students at the school. Your actions reflect great credit upon yourself, the department, and maintain the highest traditions of law enforcement. Congratulations on your job well done.
All right, our next item up is an update from the Water Commission regarding the water moratorium. I think Mr. Koska, oh, okay. Yeah, why don't we do the liquor license? Update of Pizano's existing liquor license and new entertainment license. When they first requested their liquor license, it was to serve until 10:00 PM. Manager Silvio Piper is requesting to extend the time to 11:00 PM, Monday through Sunday, and also requesting an entertainment license for Sunday mornings before 1:00 PM. It sounds like that might be a nice Sunday brunch. Any questions? I don't think there's any.
No concerns that we know of from the neighbors or anything? I don't think there's been concerns thus far with the current license. Okay.
Would anybody like to make a motion?
I move the board of selectmen approve the request from Pizano's Restaurant to extend their license time until 11:00 PM and have a Sunday entertainment license before 1:00 PM.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, that's unanimous. All right, now we're back to you. Hey, Mr. Koska.
You're jumping around a little today.
Yeah.
Keep everybody on their toes.
Thank you, sir.
This is the most recent, and it should answer pretty much any questions you've got. If you want to read it, do you want me to read it to you?
For the benefit of people at home?
Maybe you read it to get it on the record.
Yeah, 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 that'd be good.
Okay. Why do we need a new well? Well, maximum day, maximum day demand is the day of year with the greatest water use that any one day of the year. DEP requires us to be able to provide potable water if our biggest well is offline. And if you look at the chart, you see there, in 2017 was when we approached the town to get money to purchase land so we could build a well. That's when it became very apparent to us that we were going to run into trouble, and we needed to get a well online as quickly as possible. And you can see what happened with growth in 2020, 2021, and 2022. Right now, we're actually in violation of DEP orders to have enough potable water in the event that our top, our largest-producing well is offline. So consequently, we passed the water moratorium simply because we don't have the water to provide people that currently are customers. Okay, what's being done? Beginning in 2017, Kingston Water Department initiated efforts to identify a new water supply well. Investigative tests will, test well work was performed. In 2023, the Kingston Water Department adopted a moratorium on new water services connections until a new well is online to protect our water supply for our customers. In 2024, the land for a new well was purchased by the Kingston Water Department. In 2025, the Kingston Water Department conducted a qualifications-based design selection process. A designer for a new well and pump station was selected, and contract terms are under negotiations. I expect to have signatures very soon. We encourage our customers to conserve water, and that's, if everybody, pretty much every time I'm going to speak to anybody in public, please conserve water. If we have a dry summer, it could be very, potentially very difficult for us. So don't use more water than you have to use. And I'm here to answer any questions you might have.
Anyone have questions?
Well, I guess to start, how does this, or what is the process for requesting more water usage? And what's our stance, what's our standing now with the lost water that's happening?
We're working on the lost water issue because as much as anything, it was a reporting issue. And we weren't losing nearly as much water as people thought because we have bleeders. At the end of mains, we have bleeders. And some of the bleeders were not reporting the lost water as accurately as we wanted to. We're in the process of having a leak survey done again. It's the second leak survey we've done in the last two years in town. We found some leaks, but not, nothing big. And we'll actually pay attention to the bleeders, which is one of the issues that we needed to focus on.
So if, if that gets sorted, is there possibilities to request more usage from the state?
I'm not sure DEP would respond to it, to be honest with you. My experience in the thirty-odd years I've been a water commissioner is they do their job very well, but in the process of doing their job very well, they say no a lot. So I don't know. I don't know what they would do, to be honest with you. We'll get the, once, once we've got the survey done, once we get the information, we'll get it to DEP and see what happens. My best guess, no, I think we're, we've got a water moratorium until we get a well online. That's just the guess, though.
But that is something that's going to be asked of them?
Oh, of course.
When? Okay.
Do, I'm sorry.
Yeah, go ahead.
Do wells at individual homes impact the water table to the point where DEP would be concerned about private wells?
Private wells tend to not be as deep as the artesian wells that we use for town water.
Okay.
So they're actually drawing, the straws are drawing water out of different, different glasses, if you will.
Okay.
I guess if we get a real severe drought, then you're going to, you're going to start hearing from people to get private wells before we would have a problem.
Because they would dry out.
Their wells will start drying up. And then that, because that's closer to the surface.
Okay.
So if there's a dried period of time, the surface water will dries up, and that would be their water. But I've been in town thirty years, and I've never seen it.
Okay, thank you.
What about, you know, development? Obviously, they, a developer would be able to build homes if they built their own well. Would their well go deeper than, I would think?
Yes. If they're, if they're going to put a private well on, they can, they can build. And we've had people come to us and say, "Well, with some very good legitimate reasons on why they need to build now, and we said, 'Just put a well in.'"
Yep.
And if you have an opportunity to get a town wall later, use that well for irrigation.
Right, okay.
Is there, I guess just to backtrack to my other question, is there a timeline right now for when that survey will be done and when that will move forward?
Chris, you got an answer?
Even if it's a point-one percent chance, it's still a point-one percent chance, so.
At this time, the application process for the new well that we're looking to install, we're looking to up our allowable pumpage, and that's all part of the process. And it's such a long process. If we, by the time, the DEP's going to look at what we have now for sources. If we look at those sources right now, they're going to face the yield on those current sources. And then we have to go through that whole process again, which could take two to three years just to go through that process to get our pumpage, allowable pumpage up. And they're not going to allow the pumpage to go up without another source because you have to be able to supply at your high, we larger source offline. So they look at what we have now to supply water to the town, to the existing customers. And if we, they won't, this DEP won't allow that upage to be done. If we go through that process right now, it's going to be denied. So we're coupling that increase in allowable pumpage with the new permit with the new well, to kind of roll them all in one, instead of going through all that expense and that motion twice. It's a two- to three-year process with DEP.
And, and for the benefit of anybody watching, can, can you give us an idea? What is the timeline right now for bringing on a, a well online?
The current timeline right now is, like I said, as Mr. Koska said, we're in the process of finalizing the agreements with the design firm, and then it's the permitting process, so it, five to seven years.
Okay.
Yeah. And it, and I just want it to be clear because there seems to be some misconceptions in the public and scuttlebutt that you hear around. It is not the Kingston Water Department's position or intention with a moratorium to stop or prevent any building going on in town. I've been to several meetings where people have stated, "Oh, well, the Water Department's not allowing building." No, it's, we are allowing building. You can build all that you need to, but at this time, you cannot tie into town water. There's no water capacity available for additional customers. So people are building, they're putting wells in. And now the contract is to say, "Well, if I build a house, can I run a water line across the front lawn so when it's available, I don't have to take up the front lawn of this new home?" Absolutely, but it has to be done, our rules and regulations and our inspections have to be performed on that, for the record. So it's not our intention at all to stop building in the town of Kingston, to stop growth. It may be a challenging point for developers or for new construction, but it's, that's not the intention of the moratorium. The purpose of the moratorium is to stay within our allowable pumpages with the DEP rules and regulations, and make sure there's enough potable water to satisfy the needs and demand for the existing customers, whether it's for consumption, fire protection, or any other need. These existing customers need to be satisfied before we can add more.
I think it's important to say, too, that, and when we were interviewing people to do the design for the, the well, one of the key features was availability starting right away, reputation of finishing on time or early. So all of those things factored into the choice that we made for the developer.
Okay, thank you. Anything else?
Can we add this to the website packet? That would be great. I think it would help people to see this, too.
Absolutely.
Right, all right.
We're doing the best we can as fast as we can to get this source online, and it's, it's, like, as.
Like I said, DEP has very strict rules. They stick to them very strictly, carefully, which they should. But that is, that creates a lot, a lot of the issues we get right now are in permitting. The three is of permitting.
And we can make some assumptions based on the years on this chart where they spike that more people are home, therefore using more water.
Sure, you can go back, you know, historical weather data and see, you know, times of dry season, you know, people like a green lawn. They invest a lot in their home, they want it to look nice, that curb appeal. Absolutely, but like I said, it's, the water really needs to be devoted to the human consumption as opposed to putting it back into the ground and not get a true benefit from it for human consumption as intended.
Yeah, but I think you're right. You can look at this, and you see all the tele, all the teleworkers. Everyone's working from home and not going into Boston during, during COVID.
You see the spike with COVID.
But as, as Mr. Koska stated, you know, the DEP is very thorough in their permitting process because this is a water source to supply water to thousands of people as opposed to a private well in your yard that's going to go to just one person. So it's, it's a less moderate capacity and looking at every, every possible attempt to make sure that it's of high-quality water.
Right.
And by the way, this source does have high-quality water.
Yeah.
Well, come back anytime, let us know what we can do.
Yeah, thank you so much. I appreciate your time.
Thanks, thank you.
All right. All right, the chief is not here, so we will skip number three.
Want to talk four?
Yeah, so four is accepting the release, leaseholder of Aquaculture Lease Number One and accept the removal of name on the Aquaculture waitlist. So the current leaseholder for Aquaculture One, William Van Duser, sent in an email to the office stating he's giving up his grant. Next individual on the waitlist is Matthew Webble. Mr. Webble stated that upon his name being added to the existing license number three, completed in February, he'll remove himself from the waitlist. Shellfish Constable Dan Colvin contacted the Department of Marine Fisheries regarding the process of releasing the license as well as removing a name on the waitlist. DMF responded, and the email clearly states his intentions, and it's up to the Kingston Select Board and Shellfish Constable to make a determination. DMF is not involved in this process. So likewise, the town can also decide on removing Matt from the waiting list. So we do have a couple of suggested motions. First of all, does anybody have any questions? I don't see Dan, Dan's not on.
No.
Anybody have any questions? Tyler, is there anything you want to add to it? I don't know if there's more that you know about it.
No, everything I've read, it's lines up.
Okay.
Or I've talked to people involved, lines up.
Okay, good. All right, anybody want to make a motion?
Sure. I move the board of selectmen accept the email notification from William Van Duser voluntarily surrendering the Aquaculture License Number One effective March eleventh, 2025.
Second.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I keep wanting to say Eric, aye.
I know.
All right, another.
You want to say Eric, aye, too?
No, I want to say the T, aye.
Yeah, all right, do we have another motion?
I move the board of selectmen accept the email notification from Matthew Webble requesting to be removed from the Aquaculture waitlist effective March eleventh, 2025.
Second.
All right, all those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Tyler, aye, Tyler, aye. All right, done with that. Now we're going to go back. Chief, you are up again. We have a discussion and possible vote on a fiscal year twenty-six proposition, two and a half override for the police department. If folks have been paying attention to our meetings over the past two to three months, schools were looking a little over what we had available for a budget. But with additional revenues and then some other changes within the schools, both the elementary and the regional, they were able to basically fund without. they were able to basically fund without needing an override. They didn't have to make additional cuts, they just found other sources of revenue for that. But we still have an ongoing request from our police chief. He had, he's cut down his request recently to just, well, I'll just hand it over to you, chief, if you wanna take it away.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. What I'm effectively asking the honorable members to do is, is to take this and hand it off to annual town meeting. This has been an ongoing discussion between you as a governing entity and us as the Police Department. The two and a half override will be for five hundred, and I believe Mr. Hickey added seventy-five for employee benefits, five hundred and seventy-five thousand. You have an email that effectively breaks down what it is that we're looking for. There's some benefits to this, what it is that I'm asking you to do. The first and foremost is the timing. Next, next benefit is the, the risks that are involved in the Office of Safety, strategy for the town. And, I mean, it's kind of, this is kind of the reason that, that you brought in an outside chief, is to tell you what it is that we need. And this is not a list of wishful thinking and wants, these are needs. In terms of timing, it takes eighteen to twenty-four months to get a police officer hired. You have to request a civil service list. We have to conduct a thorough background investigation. We have to wait for an academy. The academy is six months. When they're out of the academy, they're not gonna be on their own, they're gonna be with the field training officer for anywhere from sixty to ninety days, notwithstanding any remediation time. There is some uncertainty with the Municipal Police Training Committee, if anybody caught any of the headlines about the Cape Academy. What that's gonna do is, there were some training issues with the staff instructors at the Recruit Academy in the Cape, and that's being worked on. But it's un, it's uncertain whether or not they're gonna have a new director, and whether or not they're gonna be able to run a subsequent recruit academy in five and a half months, or five months. So what that's gonna do is, it's gonna cause an aggregation of a waitlist for other academies. West Boylston, Randolph, Lynn Fields, MBTA Boston, Plymouth, and Falmouth are the main academies. I might have missed one, but those are the main academies that we would use. So there's a timing issue there. If the town decides to not forward this to town meeting, everybody knows that there's probably gonna be a two and a half override next year. So now we've extended the delay time for boots on the ground from eighteen to twenty-four months to anywhere from twenty-four to thirty-six months to get new hires. Because of the delay of a year, if we decide, if the town decides to not do anything at town meeting. Officer safety is a concern. It is my biggest concern. I'm very serious about the safety of the people who serve the community. What ends up happening a lot is you have this, you have a burnout factor that's happening now and again with overtime and forced overtime just constantly happening because we're operating with a skeleton crew. The town should consider a strategy about where we are right now versus where the town wants to be for labor relations and collective bargaining, about whether or not this town wants to go the route of having minimum staffing levels for patrol officers on the street. There are some risks. I mean, I just talked about the delay. We also have the financial risk of one officer going out, one eleven F injured on duty status. If somebody gets hurt and they're out for any foreseeable amount of time, you're looking at anywhere from twenty-five thousand dollars a month for the backfill of the overtime that we have not budgeted for. I do have a meeting coming up with Mr. Hickey and Gowerie Group to discuss whether or not we wanna adjust the premium so that the backfill of overtime is not only being compensated at four hundred dollars, because it's about what we get right now. So there is a risk with just not having enough bodies. Employee burnout, I mean, I'm a big advocate, as anybody on the department knows, about officer wellness, peer support, and those types of things. I, I think to this point in time, and this is not just my work, this is the work of the administrative staff, the two lieutenants and my assistant, Laura, we've given you a very substantial amount of information for you to consider this request. I've said it to every one of you, that I recognize this is not a small deal, given the town's financial situation at this time. And to wrap up, I'm asking that the, the board forward this to the townspeople and let them decide whether or not it should go to the election polls. Thank you.
All right, thank you, chief. So I have had some people, and we've all had people reach out when we were discussing a school override. So we had a lot of people reaching out one way or another. I've only had one person, one, one taxpayer reach out to me regarding the police override. And she just wanted us to remember that the taxpayers this past winter got a huge tax bill increase over last year because of the amount that we had under the tax levy that we were able to raise taxes without an override. So that was a big jump. This year, we didn't have as much available tax levy, so the tax increase next year won't be nearly as high. And she also mentioned, you know, the sewer bills and the water bills and whatnot going up. But having said that, I believe that this amount would be, was it a hundred dollars a year for, if, if, if we have five hundred and seventy-five thousand? I think it was just about a hundred dollars a year for an average home. Because when we were looking at this before for under school.
Average being?
About five.
Six hundred.
The average in the town, I think it's six fifty or something.
Okay, six fifty.
I think, or something like that.
And so on a million dollar override, it was a hundred and forty-something when we were looking at school overrides. So that brings it to, like, right around a hundred dollars for an average home of the six.
Fifty.
Fifty-something, right. So if your house is worth more, it'd be that much more. So at this point, it's about twenty-five dollars a quarter, if you're paying quarterly, for a new sergeant and two new patrolmen. So any, any questions from the board or comments or anything else?
Just wanna make sure that I have this right. The operating budget for police, the one that we have currently approved.
Sorry.
That, it's okay, that Finance Committee is reviewing or already reviewed, included one new patrolman and one new dispatcher, correct?
The last one did. So the last fiscal year?
This, the one that we have.
No, we put them back in because they were going, they were going to be.
In here.
Yes, but, but they were cut.
They were?
They were, so.
So this is where we get a little confusion, because the last, so we voted the police, we voted the budget sixty-three million. And at the next meeting, the chief came and said, just to be clear, that budget included one patrolman and one dispatcher. And I don't think I realized that at the time, so I wanna make sure I know what's in this budget versus what's in the override request.
I may be confused. My understanding, chief, do you, do you know, is this, did, did we already put in one dispatcher and one patrolman in?
So I wanna make sure that I'm correct here, fiscal twenty-five had those positions, that this is what the board, when I first got here.
Yep.
Saw fit to add a new patrol officer.
Yep.
And a new dispatcher. We've since hired the new dispatcher.
Right.
So it's for twenty-five, you're not talking about twenty-six?
No.
Right, but with the hypothesis of a four percent, we had worked with the town administrator, and had we stuck with four percent, we would have lost those positions.
Right.
And Laura, correct me if I'm wrong, but we ended up adding two hundred and thirty-three thousand or so to maintain, I wanna say, eleven or ten percent increase to keep those positions and not cut.
Right.
I see.
Right.
These positions that are in this.
These aren't new for next year.
So the eleven percent included keeping existing people, not adding new people?
Correct.
Okay, I definitely misunderstood that that night. That's why I wanted to bring it up now, because I don't know that I was alone.
You gave me a panic.
Well, that's why I wanted to ask. So the current budget in this book is existing staffing. Okay, and then the override that is before us for consideration is, hold on, I have it right here.
One sergeant and two patrolmen.
One sergeant, two patrolmen.
Four hundred and eighty-six thousand, change.
For a half a million dollars.
Half a million.
Yeah, okay.
And that includes overtime costs for PTO, training, equipment, I think even ammo for the police academy, because we have to pay for that.
Yes.
It, it just so happened tonight was kind of two, we, we, the first thing we saw was the celebration of three incredible members of the police force, and, which is amazing. So you're sitting there, you're like, oh, man, this is like the best, this is the best, you know, best police department on the planet, which it is.
Also, the best part of this is being present for those things.
It's the best part of the night. And being present for that. The next one was that we're not gonna be able to open up a water moor at twain for five to seven years. And so it was just this dichotomy, if you're going, oh, man, those are, you know, we're so proud of our, our guys and, and then, which we still are, it doesn't take away. Water doesn't take that away, but then we're going, how do we fund these, how do we fund these things past a couple of years? You know, how do we pass these things, how do we fund these things past a two and a half percent, or, two and a half prop override? Because that's what, that's what scares me is, is, both things scare me. One, not having, we, we hired you to bring you in to be a change, a change agent into, into prop up an already great department. But you have two things. One is we, not over hired, but we hired to where we're supposed to be, because I believe those numbers are true. Absolutely, I believe everything you've given us is true. In two to three years, you know, our revenues aren't there, we're, we're back to prop two and a half to fund those again and again and again. Projections right now for the economy are scary. People are scared, people are nervous. You know, frankly speaking, if, if the town ran like a business, which it's not a business, so that's not why, it's, it's run very differently, you know, we would have cut half of our staff, you know, we're basically down to zero, you know, after this budget comes up. And so it's just, it's, it's, and we've talked about this in the font, and, and, but just so everybody else knows, it's like, I think, I think this board is extremely pro-police. I don't even know where this, this is gonna go. Obviously, we are, we, we very much care about our police department, but we also have a lot of other things in our ears, too. And, and like we've mentioned, sewer going up, water rates going up. Next year, a prop, we already mentioned a prop two and a half for schools, I mean, this year was a Band-Aid to get us through this year. So it, what makes me nervous is, and I hate to use the word running nimble, because it's probably offensive, but running nimble and running, you know, and running very, very frugally versus pumping up, pumping up a department without any projection of resources to be able to fund that in the future. And that's what just makes me nervous. It, it absolutely, because the last thing you wanna do is pump up a department from basically taxing, in my opinion, overtaxing, to get to that point without the, without the projected revenue to cover it, and then have to lay people off or, and, and anything in that kind of direction, so. Or put the fear in God of people saying, you know, if we don't fund this in, you know, in two years, here's what's gonna happen. And so I just, I get nervous about, about both. But in the fiscal stance right now, people are being asked of a lot, they're being asked of a lot, so. It's been a tough, it's been a tough decision going back and forth, but I also think that part of, and I, I'm not trying to take it all night, even though I do that quite a bit, but I also think that, I know, I know we're voting on this going on the warrant, but I also, I think it's important to get a poll of, if this thing went on the warrant, who in the board would support it? Because we've had this go before, where we didn't have support for it, then it can't be moved. So I think those two things, I think they're important to know. Is there, beyond it being on the warrant, is there actual support from the board that would, that would then vote yes and affirmative and, and then present it at town meeting?
And I think it's important to, just to, to make note, Tyler, you sort of said it. I mean, what we're voting on tonight is whether we wanna push it forward on the warrant. Then at town meeting, it would need a favorable vote at town meeting members. And if it passes there, then it goes to our election as a ballot question, and it would need to pass there, and all registered voters can, can vote on that.
It's just a majority vote.
Correct, yeah, it's just a simple majority for, for all of those things, including here, getting it on the, it just takes three of us. So it's, it's, it takes three votes, first just the five of us, then the two hundred or so who show up to town meeting, and then it's opened up to the, whatever it is, nine thousand.
Ten thousand.
Ten thousand registered voters in the town. So did anybody else have anything they wanted to ask?
I think before we talk about the next steps, I wanted to take a second to say, I very much appreciate, and I spoke to you earlier this week, that your dedication and your passion for your department, I think Tyler spoke to this a little bit, this, and Eric, this is, we brought you in to, to help us figure out what we needed to do and what that looked like, and you're doing exactly that. So regardless of what happens next, you have shown up for the department, you have presented a plan, you have shown the, how much you care about this community and everyone in it. So I just wanted to thank you for that, and just make sure that we, before we say yes or no to anything, that we take a second to just appreciate your, your work.
Thank you. It's because I love working with these people. You have, you have a pretty fair idea of what we have for our workforce. I come to work with a smile on my face every day, and they are a pleasure to work with. You know, a couple of points, this is a first step. I mean, I, I will speak candidly about, you know, hypotheticals about what the staffing level should be. And this gets us towards what the department should have for manpower. And again, you know, it has to be at a pace that the town knows that it's got X amount coming in for revenue, versus we know that we can dedicate this much to the police. Next fiscal year, you may see, regardless of what the board votes tonight, obviously, I'm asking you to, to send it to town meeting, but you may see police chief and the fire chief working together on a public safety growth plan. Because I have to pay, pay mind to my counterpart on the red team. I mean, he's advocated for the police department prior to me being here, as I understand it, so. This is a first step towards getting us the, what I believe to be substantial amount of growth, but this is only a first step. And I recognize, too, again, it's, we talk about it, like, it's twenty-six dollars and fifty cents, based on our calculations and what Mr. Hickey and Ms. Barrett sent you today, per quarter. But that's twenty-six fifty per quarter on top of what you have to anticipate's gonna happen next year, and the year after that, and the year after that. So I recognize and appreciate that, too, as a taxpayer myself, just not in this community.
Anything else?
No, I mean, I mean, from my perspective, kind of like, it's not the same thing as schools, but I, I do feel like this is something that's worthy of going to the warrant. I think you've done exactly what you said you were gonna do, and I think that we are extremely understaffed for these type of things. So I, I am personally in favor of it, but.
In favor of going on the warrant or in favor of the, of the article? Both?
Probably both.
Okay. That takes care of the straw poll, if it was.
Unanimous?
Yeah, that, that was a quick, quick question, if it was a.
So you're saying you're a no, based on?
I've been saying I'm a no for months.
I'm just.
Yeah, I know, you, oh, right, yeah, 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 and same thing, I.
No and no.
Huh?
No and no? So no, put it on the warrant, no, oppose it at town meeting?
Correct.
Okay. I'm just jotting it down. You said straw poll, so.
No, I, I, I'm sure.
So you have at least one on either side, so it's not unanimous, whatever it is.
Exactly, no, that's that.
And I am generally in favor of putting something forward on a warrant for a town meeting. And we haven't voted yet whether we're supporting the articles yet.
Uh-uh.
We'll be doing that.
Twenty-fifth?
Yeah, twenty-fifth, no?
Unless we're closing the warrant. It's probably later.
Yeah, after.
Got it.
I got the nod, the shake.
And just for clear creation, the reason I asked for the straw poll of if you were gonna support the article at town meetings, because it's very awkward if you go up there and it's a zero five or zero four one, or however it works out. That was the reason why I asked if anybody was, not, I know in our board, just anybody watching.
So are you abstaining?
I am recusing myself from this conversation.
Yeah, okay. So there's, there's four of us voting, so it's gonna, it's going to take three.
He told, he told me I'd be the swing vote.
So let's open up. Would somebody like to make a motion?
I'll, I'll do it, sure, why not? I move the Board of Selectmen support including a proposition two and a half warrant article on the twenty twenty-five annual town meeting warrant in the amount of, is it five hundred and seventy-five thousand?
Yeah. All right, I'll, I'll second it. Any other discussion before we vote? The only thing I wanna add is we thought we would have some remaining money on, from the regional school committee, which we do. But we have some cost overruns in the, the fire department that's gonna eat into that. We were kind of hoping, and it had been floated, to potentially use some of that remaining tax levy, maybe to fund one of the, one or two of the positions here. But that, it does not look likely. So if there is anything left under that tax levy, you know, we'll have to make a decision on that later. But it's not gonna be usable for police.
What, you shaking us to cars, shaking us?
Do you? Did you wanna say something?
Something you want to say.
Yeah.
How you doing? Hi. My only concern, maybe I'm misinterpreting this, is right now, we believe the budget for twenty-six has excess levy capacity of two hundred K. But if there's a problem with the ongoing twenty-five budget, that two hundred K is not going to help that situation, okay? And as long as I'm up here, I. And as long as I'm up here, and, and I think that's what you were leading into, you know I have always been a strong proponent of as much excess levy capacity as possible. I'm at the point now where whether we have zero excess levy capacity or two-hundred K, it doesn't make much difference. So I see a possible alternative to a two-and-a-half override of using that two-hundred K, challenging the police department to perhaps use that two-hundred K to hire two new patrol officers without doing the sergeant for this year around. The two-hundred K is light from a full-blown patrol officer expense, but that includes overtime, training, et cetera. So perhaps for two-hundred K, getting additional personnel, you could get, you know, two patrol officers. My concern of doing two-and-a-half override this year, even for five-hundred-and-seventy-five K, is I feel strongly that there's going to be a requirement for a more significant override next year, probably for education, for public safety, you name it. And I wonder if we would be setting ourselves up for some difficulty if we go to the residents two years in a row for overrides. But it absolutely is your decision, and I just wanted to provide the information, and I fully support what the police chief and his department are trying to do. The only difference I've had forever is do we do it over one or two years or three or four or five years? Because as you all know, we have funded an additional twenty-five percent for the police department over the last eighteen months. Granted, we probably would have had to fund ten percent anyhow, but it's still a differential of ten or fifteen percent. Thank you.
So Keith is not here. I don't know if you can answer the question with fire. Carl was saying we can't use the, the two-hundred thousand, and I may have misunderstood when, when Keith and I were talking. If the fire department is-
So they're short, right? The medical and overtime and recall?
We don't have the final number yet.
No, no, it, it's estimated. There's, you know, been a, a lot of constraints on the fire department budget, not to speak for Chief Douglas, but, you know, they have a number of staff who are out injured.
Right.
So those shifts are all being covered with overtime, so that's, you know, an unexpected expense. Those are, you know, unfortunate situations, but, you know, because of the nature of that. So that is putting strain on that budget.
Right. But then where does the funding to cover that come from?
Yeah.
Yeah, so then-
Well, that's, it's one of, it's probably the biggest thing, you know, there's probably going to be, you know, looking at the budget as a whole to see if there are any other bud, you know, departments-
Anyone who's under.
You could transfer from.
Right.
Um, we've already used some of the reserve fund for an unexpected building repair, furnace at highway. You know, there's going to be some, there's going to be some challenges insofar as, um, looking at how things are. Snow and ice is, is already depleted, so, you know, they had to sand a lot this year, they were out quite a bit, you know. It doesn't look like, you know, you don't see three feet of snow, you think it's okay, but, you know, black ice is no one's friend, so.
So am I mistaken that the, the remaining tax levy, the two-hundred-and-six-whatever-thousand, that is still available then?
The two-hundred, we made a slight adjustment to compensate, uh, when we were looking at things, how the elected official line to put a budget. So it's, it's about two-hundred thousand. So that excess levy capacity for the FY twenty-six budget-
Yeah.
Is still there.
Yeah, okay.
Um, based on the, you know, not everything has been voted, but it is, you know, it's, it's pretty close to final. And that would, in turn, if you needed it, would be something that could be, you know, allocated to a departmental budget or whatever, you know, town expense. There still would be, you know, if there was a, an adjustment to, if it was, you know, from three to two for the, you know, the department, the police department, you still have the corresponding benefit costs. We just want to, because our budget is pretty tight for the benefit cost as well, you don't want to like, you know, immediately incur a deficit and try to be cognizant of it. You know, the, the only benefit I could think of, and it's certainly, I don't want to speculate, but if, if it is not a full-year staffing-
Right.
You may be able to, to stagger it in such a way to, you know, still be able to cover those costs, but, you know, fill those much-needed positions.
That, that's why I'm saying that, that each patrolman, if you include all the training and overtime and everything else, it was somewhere around a hundred-and-forty-eight each, I think.
A hundred-and-forty-four.
A hundred-and-forty-four, I'm sorry.
But if you did one and then a half year, it's another option.
But then the following year- Right, we did, and then the following year, it's-
Yeah, hit you hard, but if we're already-
We're already looking at overrides for next year. So I guess, these are other options. I don't think we're going to be voting on, we're not going to re-vote the, the police budget tonight. I don't think we're ready to do that.
No, and you have a motion in a second, too, on the-
Yeah, we do. So, um, we have a motion in a second. Any other discussion before we vote?
I'll hold everybody in suspense. I'm, I struggle with this, again, but at the end of the day, I feel the same way I did when we spoke with the school budget, is the people of this town can't afford this right now. It's, even, even a slight increase right now is, is more than people can handle. So let's take the suspense, I'll take the suspense away.
No, and I think, and I think the, what we've all said is a sign of reflection of how the town or the board feels, as much as it might hurt, and that give morale. I, I get that, that's a big deal. But we very much value our police department.
And if we can find a way to do some of this, like what Carl was suggesting, I think that's a, we should definitely pursue that as another option.
All right, so let's, let's take the vote. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
And against?
Nay.
Okay, so that, that bailed. So it's a two-two, oh. So I guess the next step is we will be discussing potentially changing the budget numbers with adding in, or reviewing that, that two-hundred K or so that's available. Yeah, Chief?
So I'd ask that that be an agenda item at your next meeting. I did discuss publicly with the Finance Committee the use of that levy capacity to fund, we, we would figure out a way to fund one sergeant, two patrol officers for, for a partial fiscal year, moving the needle, so.
Do you think there's a benefit to, I mean, obviously, obviously getting all three on the rolls is a, is a benefit, because it's, they're there and we have to fund it, right? And I mean that in a good and just honest way.
Yeah.
Is, I mean, if it was one patrolman, I mean, what's our, I guess I-
What's your, what's your low?
Well, we could, we could fund one patrolman all the way through FY twenty-six.
We've drilled down as low as we can go. I mean, my, my original request was a deputy chief, three patrolmen and a dispatcher.
Oh, no, I know that, I, I'm sorry, and not to cut you off, I'm not talking about how low can you go. I'm talking about what would be the, I guess, the downside to, is, is the upside exactly what I said before, is we get them on the rolls partially?
Yeah.
Get the training and things underway.
The downside is the sustainability. You'd have to build some sustainability money into Fiscal Twenty-Seven, and we'd probably have to hitch our wagon to whatever overrides come in in the future.
Right.
Right, so you would, instead of, instead of hiring one for full-time FY twenty-six, three partial, and then-
Yep.
Get back to the drawing board?
Yep. I appreciate the, the board's time. I am not alone, and I'm disappointed that we couldn't at least forward it to the taxpayers, and I don't know if there's a way for you to reconsider. But, you know, we were hoping to at least start moving the ball forward with giving it to the, to the, the town meeting. So thank you for your time.
All right, thank you, Chief.
And just for, so that people know, there is, there is always an ability to reconsider.
Yes.
Um, if you're on the, sort of, I don't want to say the winning, but the winning side of a vote, you can move for reconsideration at the next meeting, even if it's not. But you can put it on the agenda for discussion in case anyone wants to do that.
Okay. All right, the next, I know, next appointment is wastewater pump station operator and maintenance technician. Due to a vacancy, the department in, uh, position of wastewater pump station operator and maintenance technician, that's a long title, is vacant. After the recruitment process, the superintendent is recommending the promotional hiring of David Wilson to the position. Would anybody like to make a motion? And I see Sheila's on, she used to do these, well.
She did. I move the Board of Selectmen to appoint David Wilson to the position of wastewater pump station operator and maintenance technician, a grade six, step four, non-exempt position as part of the Kingston Town Employee Union Labor, with an anticipated start date of March twelfth, twenty-twenty-five, consistent with the terms of the offer letter.
Second.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, that's unanimous.
Tomorrow. Welcome, welcome aboard tomorrow.
Yeah. All right, we've already done the, the minutes. What's that?
So it's actually a promotion, it's not really welcome aboard, it's welcome to a new step, I guess.
Right.
We did minutes?
So we did the minutes. I have the town administrators report, I'm just going to glance through it real quick. The Board of Assessors and the Veterans Agent will meet today to discuss the HERO Act legislation that was approved that expands the property tax exemptions for veterans. Below is a table of three current exemptions and exemption amounts, and then the new exemption amounts. Additionally, the new exemption limits can be increased annually by the annual cost of living. So the, the first type, less than one-hundred percent disabled, the current exemption is four-hundred, the new one is eight-hundred. If you are one-hundred percent disabled, the, the current exemption is a thousand, and the new one would be two thousand. And if you are one-hundred percent disabled and living in adapted housing, the current exemption is fifteen-hundred, and the new exemption limit is three thousand. And the current exemptions are funded through overlay in the amount of ninety-nine thousand, one hundred. The Board of Assessors can recommend no change in the current exemption or any amount up to the new exemption limits. Any recommended change in the exemption amount would be placed on the twenty-twenty-five annual town meeting warrant for town meeting approval. And then, under project updates, we have two new trees in front of the Adams Center. They've, well, they've been removed, and staff are exploring the options available to provide parking for the building. Also, town planner Valerie Massard was awarded a grant to fund phase-two contamination testing of the former fire department on Maple Street. Old Connolly Planning is overseeing the project for the town, and we have a timeline in our handout as well. I'm not going to go through that whole thing. And then the first of the five small "Welcome to Kingston" signs with the town seal has been delivered. I'm not sure if it was still downstairs, I didn't notice.
It was, it was today.
It was, okay. I, I saw it the other day. It, they, they look great. So it, it, right now, it's at the bottom of the townhouse center staircase. Folks want to come in and take a look, the sign will be installed when the ground is completely thawed. We'll have additional signs that'll be installed near the McDonald's on Route, it's got to be on Route Three-A on the sewer property, Enterprise Drive near Kingston Collection, Loring Street near the Duxbury Town Line, and Elm Street on the Palimpton Town Line. We've had no personnel updates, and then miscellaneous updates. Again, nomination papers are currently available for candidates interested in running for town-elected positions. A list of those positions is available on the town website, and nomination papers are due back by Friday, March twenty-eighth. And that's all we've got.
Just a reminder, they are due back on the twenty-eighth, but that is a Friday. So just keep in mind, the Clerk's Office closes at eleven-thirty in the morning, so just keep that in mind.
Nice call-up. All right, any comments from the Selectmen? No?
No, I mean, thank you to everybody for all of their hard work on this budget season. It's been difficult. Next year's not going to be any easier. It's going to, in fact, probably be a lot harder. So I think that the budget discussions for this year are starting to wrap up, but the budget discussions for next year are going to start the day after town meeting, so.
Right.
And then the, and the policy part of the town meeting has just started, really, I mean, as far as the warrant goes, so. Still a lot more work to go, but-
We do. I, I just, I really wanted to just make an effort to thank everyone for their hard work, because this budget has been quite the puzzle. So for those people who spent countless nights working on it, and days, I just want to appreciate their time and effort.
Yeah, thanks to our Finance Committee and our Finance Director. All right, our next regular meeting is March twenty-fifth, that's in two weeks. And with that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Adjourn to-
Executive session.
I'll make a motion to-
Not to return to open session for the purpose of, you have to say it.
Oh, God, I didn't have it up in front of me either.
So, okay, so move to adjourn, uh, move to recess to executive session, not to return to open session for the purpose of to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel, or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel, Town Administrator, second.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right.